Lord, we just thank you for this day that you've given us. We just thank you for the blessings of life and we just thank you for being a part of the state of Georgia here in Hart County. We just thank you for our community and what it stands for. Lord, we just pray that you would give us the wisdom that we need throughout this meeting to make the best decisions for the people of Hart County. Lord, we pray for our protection on our EMS, our emergency services, fire department, deputies, sheriff. And we just pray, Lord, we just thank you for all these guys and we just pray for your protection upon them. In that name we pray. Amen.
This time I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019 Meeting of the Hart County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. For those of you watching at home, you can go to the Hart County Board of Commissioners website at www.hartcanyegadog or dot org, either one. And you can follow along with us under the meeting agenda. You can get our read-along packet and you can follow along with the information that we have. First item of business tonight will be to approve the agenda. Any changes?
No changes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby and a second by Commissioner Teasley to approve the agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the previous meetings. You've got the January 8th, 2019 meeting minutes in your packet. Can you get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment on the minutes? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Item seven, remarks by invited guest committees and authorities. At this time, I'd like to recognize Annika Woodruff from the ARC, Gina Kiesler from the GMRC. We've got a grant check presentation tonight, I think. So if you ladies would come forward and commissioners, if we all go down, we'll do this.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you very much for hosting us this evening. Gina was unable to make it this evening, so Lauren Yoder is here who worked on the project application and is our partner at the Appalachian Regional Commission and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And we're happy to present this check to the commission this evening on behalf of the Industrial Building Authority for the sewer lift station, base three of the Gateway Industrial Park. And we want to acknowledge all the hard work that you've done. We want to acknowledge what the IBA has done to increase employment and increase the standard of living and the quality of life throughout Hart County. And we are prime partners with you in this endeavor. Yes, it's a great thing. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead while we're coming down.
We don't have time, so sorry.
This grant will be used toward sewer improvements up at the Gateway Industrial Park in a partnership with the city of Livonia. So it's a good thing, win-win for the whole community. This time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jason Ford, the Hartwood IBA Director. He's going to talk with us a little bit about rural zone initiatives.
Okay, so thank you very much for the opportunity to come talk to y'all. This is really a for-year information brief. It's a potential that kind of first-line staple like yourselves might be asked questions about what is the rural zone? How does it benefit me? And it's also just an opportunity to get it out to the public so folks kind of know about it. Rural Zone came about 2017. It's a gorgeous legislation, so it's revitalizing underdeveloped rural areas legislation. And I found about this about a month or two after I came on and the application deadline was like in August. So we applied and was selected. So Georgia will select up to 10 cities per year to receive this designation. The first year, they selected nine and we were the set class and they only selected nine. So it's a pretty stringent process. As we move along, it's a five-year designation, so we have it through 2023. And so eligible businesses now can take advantage of the program, but it's really an incentive program. Oftentimes, in businesses, you know, it's all about is the time right for me to take action. Is it time to expand? Is it time to purchase? Is it time to hire? And this program really creates the opportunity to say yes to those questions. Okay. So we have a map up here. It talks about the purpose. This map is really defined by Department of Community Affairs. We kind of proposed it, but ultimately they had to have the final say. And there were some guidelines as to what your map could be and should be. So it had to be, you know, a group of buildings over 50 years old and in the downtown and such. So really, anything inside this yellow zone becomes eligible for the tax credits we're about to talk about. So again, it's tax credits, and that's important to understand what a tax credit is. So we'll talk about it in the next slide. But there's three categories for tax credits, commissioners. You can get creating jobs, you can get investment tax credits and rehabilitation tax credits. But really, I call this a job creation program because you have to create jobs before you can get the second two categories of tax incentives. But a tax credit is a dollar-for-dollar reduction. You don't end up getting a refund if your tax liability isn't as high as your tax credit, but you can carry forward those. We'll talk about that in a little bit. So here's the first category, so it's the job creation. So I think that it's a smart program because often in whole communities, you know, small businesses might not be able to hire a bunch of full-timers, but they might be able to hire a bunch of part-timers. So if two people share 40 hours, that equals one full-time equivalent job. So you might have someone who's going to be the manager of an ice cream shop and then hire two high school or college students, and then that equals the two full-time equivalent jobs. And then you get $2,000 in tax credits per job created, not to exceed 40,000. So that's 20 jobs. And then you get that for five years. So if you only created two, that's 4,000, 4,000, 4,000, 4,000, 4,000. And then the second category, and again, you're only eligible for this once the two jobs are created. And the program understands there's going to be an order of operations that you're going to likely buy the building or lease the building and then rehab the building and create jobs. So this will lay out some standards for how that works. But the investment tax credit pieces, people who buy building downtown in that zone gets 25% of the purchase price back in tax incentives and not to exceed $125,000. Those two, those two full-time jobs have to be maintained over the course of five years. But so long as that happens, that 25% gets spread out over the five years, the five-year time period, and, you know, they can carry, again, they can carry forward those tax credits. And one caveat to it is they understand, I think, that, you know, hiring might happen until 2021. And just because our designation ends doesn't mean that they lose the opportunity to claim those tax credits. They can still get their tax credits for the five years kind of beyond, you know, the designation. So again, if hiring happens in 2022, you know, potential, you know, business expansion or new businesses can still get those full tax credits. The last section is the rehab tax credit, so you get up to 30% of rehabilitation costs. So, you know, if a building comes, you know, if someone comes in and buys a downtown building and spends tons of money, they can get up, you know, not to exceed $150,000 back in tax credits. So if we kind of add all of that up and you're creating, you know, 10 jobs and then you kind of max out the investment of how much the building costs, max out the rehab cost, all of a sudden, you're getting tons and tons of money in tax credits. And that's for business. That's not a one-time shot. So it creates an atmosphere where, you know, economic growth is possible. So this is kind of hard to read, but there is rehabilitation standards. And the goal of the Main Street program is to do economic growth through the historic preservation. So this is really the guidelines to help protect that historic part of Hartwell. In cities where there's Historic Preservation Commission, a certificate of appropriateness from them kind of counts for this, but they really deal with outside buildings. So this kind of creates standards for inside the building. And then claiming the credit, this is some busy slides about what to do and how to do, but essentially, they work with the DDA office. We help them fill out some paperwork. We send it in to Georgia Department of Community Affairs. They authorize everything and then send it back to the applicant, the DDA office and the IRS so that they know those tax credits have been applied for and approved. And then they fill out all the paperwork they get back when they fill out their taxes. So if you have any questions, you can reach out to me at hartwellmainstreet@hartwellcom.net. We are having a luncheon learn on February 5th to kind of go over this in a little bit more detail, although it's getting full up, so we'll probably have a second, like we have a third one, because it's kind of getting in high demand now. So if any of you would like to come to that, please let me know and I'll be happy to slide you in. And then our contact for this program at DCA is Tricia DePedro. So that's who I would send information into. And then real quickly, if I can get this to, I'm going to skip a couple of slides here. We've got some frequently asked questions. So people have asked, are the tax credits still transferable? The answer is no, but you can carry forward those tax credits for 10 years. Can the rehab tax credits be used to pay for demo? They say only, you know, depending on circumstance. And we don't really fall into the category, we're not an opportunity zone or military zone, but if we were or if we ever become that, you have to pick which tax incentives are you going to use. And again, if your tax credit is greater than your liability, you don't get a refund. You just carry those forwards as long as necessary for up to 10 years. And if for whatever reason those two jobs go away, let's say you only hire two and one of them doesn't work out, you can rehire into that position because it is a job created. But if the job goes away altogether, you don't get penalized for tax credits you've already received. You just don't get to claim them and go forward. So you really have to make sure that, you know, that, again, the Lynch pin is creating jobs, so that's why I say it's a job creation program first and foremost, because we want to, you know, help bolster the economic growth and you do that through businesses. Because of course, when jobs are created, hopefully people are spending that money in the community, so it really is an economic growth. So, and then we have some other supporting tools that we can help people with, and we'll call this a tease, so if you come to the February 5th luncheon learn, you'll get more information about this. But we can help people get these funds together. So the Downtown Development Revolving Loan Fund is GAAP funding, so it's like a 50-40-10 structure, where it's 50% of traditional financing, 40% of it's GAAP funding, and then 10% is kind of your own money. We have a Main Street, the city of Hartwell has a Main Street revolving loan that works very similar. We have a facade grant program. And then that boost program is not something that's in yet, but some other cities have started to do this. Essentially, it's a micro-financing where all the businesses may throw in some money together and then they control if you've got to, you know, redo the roof or something like that, you can kind of borrow from that pool of money so that, and then you pay it back to the program, so it kind of costs up or revolves. So with that, that really kind of concludes what I'd be talking about. I'd be welcome to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I got one.
Sure.
And I may have missed it, but I didn't remember seeing it in there. Will this help existing businesses if they want to expand?
Yes, absolutely. So again, it's all, you have to demonstrate how many jobs you had, say, 2018, because we just went live January 1st. So in 2018, if you had six employees, and then in 2019, you have nine employees, they get those tax credits and then that opens them up for, say, they are leasing the building, but they want to purchase it. Or if the person who owns the building wants to do the revitalization or help with the revitalization, they can share those tax credits appropriately. So it's just as good for existing businesses as it is for new businesses coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Jason.
Next item on the agenda is reports by constitutional officers and department heads. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that the only thing I have tonight will be covered in the main part of the agenda. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. County Administrator's report.
I don't have anything much to bridge up on Shoal Creek Road. Seems to be coming along fairly well. They like, all the rest has been socked in with weather, but they are in the process of putting it back. They've got all the tear-out done and they got it down to the bedrocks and they are putting the floor back in the bridge. That's about all I have on my report.
Chairman's report. We opened up our first permanent EMS substation at Goldmine on Airline Goldmine Road adjacent to Goldmine Fire Department last Tuesday at much time. And one of the things we want to talk about, and I think this would be great for the community, is to have an open house. The one at Crossroads will be opening shortly, there's still more work left to do. You have an ETA of when that one's going to go?
It's mainly on the weather. We still got six things we've got to put in, we've got to dry stuff, we've got to put out the biggest things. And it's down that hole and it's wet out there. We can't get in and out until it dries out, so. As far as the open house at Goldmine, we was going to try to shoot for this weekend. It's going to be kind of weather-dependent. We've got to clean up around the outside and do other than that.
Why don't we just shoot for next weekend?
Okay.
Does it okay with everybody?
What date?
Do it on Sunday afternoon, 2 to 4.
What's the date? It'll be in January. We'll be happy.
About 3 to 5.
But I'm sure you noticed all those.
We'll coordinate it and then advertise it.
We get that. We come to an agreement by Tuesday, we can get in the horrible sun next week, and we put on a website.
All right, just for the record, that those substations were paid for, money received from Ty Cobb Healthcare Systems. It was earmarked for healthcare when the hospital closed. That's where that money came from. Chairman's report, only other thing I've got, we have received a couple of ordinance revision recommendations. Would like to start looking ahead and planning a meeting when we can discuss that sometime in the next four to six weeks, just as FYI. That's the only other thing I had. Commissioners' reports, District 1.
Only thing I have, we've got a situation arising on Cedar Pond down off of 29 Highway, lived here at Church Road, where we got a landowner have filled the pond up with motors and cars. DNR already been involved, they're involved in it now to investigate it. So I want to put y'all on point that this gentleman, something's got to be done concerning this situation down there.
You said he filled up the pond?
You got motors, cars, and everything. It's I.D. Pond.
And a pond. What?
It's actually in the flood zone. It's actually in the flood zone of the creek area.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Which could pollute the water?
Pollute the water.
Correct.
That thing that me and you discussed, I ain't got nothing. I saw it up the road, what a ditch problem is up here that other residents.
Yeah, we got to replace that pipe where the road sunk down a little bit. That pipe's already, we already waiting on a locate to get it changed out.
Yeah, we're on that too. That's all I'm concerned about.
District 2.
Terrific. Anything on Station 10, the fire department down there, status?
Station 10?
About it, yeah.
Don't have an update. We still waiting on getting a permanent driveway and temporary driveway is still in. Trucks are in the station. I mean, it's something that ain't ready to go.
Station 10. There you go. That's it.
District 3.
I have nothing this time, Mr. Chairman.
District 4.
Yeah, I didn't really have nothing, but something just entered my mind. I had spoken to Terrell about it the other day and I was turning lane, turned on the same and said, has that ever been reported to the DOT? That's already sinking and the asphalt's coming apart. And it hadn't been done in just a few months.
There was a DOT truck up there stopped the other day looking at it, so they're aware of it anyway.
I don't know if it's going to get any worse or not, but that could present a hazard at some point in time.
And the arms store, that's the one that's coming up.
It did a pretty good dip in.
And they extended that turning lane to the right.
Yeah, that's what we had asked for, so make that intersection safer. I'll reach out to Robert Stevens. I think I'll talk to him about something else tomorrow anyway. I'll mention it to him.
Good, thank you. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Item 12, old business. First item under old business would be Legacy Link FY19 Contract Addendum Number Two.
Correct. This is just a readjustment of the meals they serve and cost sharing on the money. The bottom line doesn't change. They just keep moving the figures around in the middle. I had Lisa to run the spreadsheet to be sure that they, but not any change in the bottom line, there's not.
Could I get a motion to add the number two? Have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby and a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Health. I would like to delay that. I've got an update that I need to share with everybody. If everybody's okay, we'll just skip this one and put it on at the next meeting. Just got some other stuff to do. So could I get a motion that we just table this for the next meeting?
I'll make a motion, we table it till the next meeting.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
I got a question. Is all applicants back in? Deadline minute for the applicants, applicants forever, all the motion. I can't remember what the deadline was.
Deadline.
They all different.
Oh, they all get their rifle.
Yeah. For this or all of them?
For this.
For this one, yeah, the line's over for this one, but the rest of them are when they come due.
But there's specialized appointments that have to be made on this one. So that's what we need to do.
Yeah, all advertising has been done for all boards.
Correct. I'll begin to, new business, item 13A, YW Vicry Road, request to abandon the dead-end stub. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, we have provided you in your meeting with several exhibits that define the issue. Right after the cover sheet, there is an aerial map. Those two outland lots are owned by a developer. And you see what's in the middle. There's a little gap there in the middle. On the next page, it shows, this is a formal plat of those same lots, and you see what's indicated as a dirt drive. That's the same.
You come by lot, right down the middle of one of these lots?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's identified as a dirt drive. The back of the next page is the very same thing. That's a duplicate. Then you'll go to the larger plat. That is the original plat of the YW Vicry subdivision, and it shows the entirety of that subdivision and the road. It's fairly lengthy. It's got a lot of lots on it. And this is at the very end. It's over on the right side of the bottom. It's shown as a, in this plat, it was shown as a 20-inch, as a 20-foot straight. This plat was made back in the 60s, I believe. I can't actually read it. And then the next one is just another one of the older plats, and that shows you, that gives you a good idea of exactly where it is. It was between Lot T and Lot U of the original subdivision. Now, that road is not recognizable as road as it stands right now. It is identified on several of these plats as a dirt drive. When this matter was brought to my attention, I then began to research how the county acquired it, because our road inventory doesn't show it. It shows YW Vicry Road, but it does not show this little strip coming off of it. It's not, in other words, as of the adoption of the road inventory back in the mid-'80s, that part was not recognized as road, therefore it is not a road. Okay? However, in looking at the deed records, I concluded that the deed to the county did include it. It basically said that it ended in, it ended with a dead end at the US government property. Okay? So the county actually does have an ownership interest in it, even though it's no longer viewed as a county road. The developer of this, of these lots has received a letter from the Corps of Engineers, and their lawyer is here tonight, and I'm going to ask him to address that piece of it. They, because this did go down to the Corps property, and he has received a letter from the appropriate folks at the Corps of Engineers, basically acknowledging that they have no use of it, they see no interest in it, but that before they would yield or before they would, you know, say that it was, that it meant nothing, they wanted the county to acknowledge that it was not a county road. In other words, they don't, the Corps is like, they're a little bit touchy. They don't want to do anything that y'all don't want them to do, is basically what it amounts to.
I'm glad you're there.
Yeah. And now, that isn't always the case, but it is here. Now, because, because this, because the root deed from Mr. YW Vicry included that, my conclusion is that it should be formally abandoned. And as you know, you've done this before in several circumstances. You first make the finding that the road is of no public use or benefit. When you make that initial finding, you then authorize the staff or my office to initiate the process. That process is to send certified mail to all the surrounding landowners. In this case, there would be four, well, three. One of them will be the company that owns these two lots, and there'd be one across the street, and then the fourth party would be the Corps. Certified letters to each one of those, and then there's a newspaper advertisement that it's a published notice, and I can't remember right now if it's two weeks or four weeks. I believe it's just two. But then you would consider the actual issue of abandonment about a month from now. In other words, it's your second meeting of February. That gives the public an opportunity, if anyone had, if anyone claims that they have used this or that they do still use it, it gives them an opportunity to make their case. And, Mr. Chairman, if it suits, I'd like for Mr., I'd like for the lawyer to come. He's a dear friend of mine, and I can't remember his last name, but he's from a, he's from a firm of Anderson, Tate, Mahaffey, which is an O-line firm in Gwinnett County that I have owned most of my professional life, so. They're all good. He's a little younger than the rest of us, though.
Thank you, Walter. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Holbrook. Mr. Gordon did a good job of laying out the case for this. I had brought some materials that include that letter. If y'all would like to take those and pass those down, you can take a look at it. Essentially, relative to the Corps of Engineers, the position they've taken on that is, well, I'll just quote what it says here in this bottom highlighted paragraph. "Our office suggests you approach the county about its potential interest in the subject strip. Unless the county has extinguished its interest in the strip, the government cannot provide confirmation that it has no interest in the strip. Should you be able to provide evidence of the county's abandonment, the government will be able to affirm formally that it claims no interest in the strip. In such event, the government will, not as a matter of established policy, issue a deed, but they will provide a letter disclaiming any interest in the strip." And our title company has indicated that is sufficient to satisfy them. And our title company has indicated that is sufficient to satisfy them relative to the fact that Corps of Engineers has no interest in it and the Corps doesn't claim any interest in it. They just want y'all to go first, basically. As Mr. Gordon stated, it's just a little dirt strip, a hundred fifty feet long by twenty foot wide, lying between two of the lots on that old original plat that created the subdivision. Problematically, Mr. Vicry didn't really specifically reserve it for anything, he didn't actually dedicate it to the county. Mr. Gordon is of the opinion that it was encompassed in that deed and we're comfortable with that. But to the best of our knowledge, there's nobody currently using it. Shade Tree Investments owns those particular lots. There's a large tract on the other side of YW Vicry Road, I think it's about thirty acres. And which happens to be owned by the principles of Shade Tree Investments, so we're, we're pretty much wholly surrounding that strip.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we start the abandonment process.
I got a couple of questions first. I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Are these red line lots?
Where are we at, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, C thirty-nine A, oh sixty-five, is that it?
So.
Are they dockable? Are these red line or green line?
I do not know that.
Keith Happlin? You'll come forward? If you'll state your, if you'll state your name first, just so everybody can.
My name is Anthony Keith Happlin. Uh, I own the lots, Shade Tree Investments is actually my retirement IRA, the lots purchase, so, not as a result, just, just clear that part of that. Uh, but two, two lots are dockable. The lot in the very corner, where you see the forty-five degree angle, that first lot is dockable. The second lot is dockable, and the third lot is, which is past where the easement is, where the dirt drive is, is not dockable, that is to the grid zone.
A and B is dockable, C is not dockable.
That is correct.
I just, I, I had that question. Another question I got, Walter, I hate to put you on the spot. Is there county water down this road? There is, isn't there?
Um, I know that there's been a, a, a great amount of talk about having water on YW Vicry Road. And I don't know specifically if it's there yet. Do you think so?
We, uh, we granted an easement from Willow Lane.
That's right.
Along our property line, which connects into the end of Y, the current end of YW Vicry.
That's exactly right. I remember when that happened, uh, did not, uh, connect the, that's all right now, but this gentleman did, uh, give the Water Authority an easement of a portion of this property so that, uh, the line on YW Vicry Road could connect with, what was it, Willow Lane? So yes, it does. And one other thing I'd point out is a lot of times what we see in Hart County property on the lake, is we'll see a little stub like that, and it's designed for access by people on the other side of the road, to the lake. Well, that's not the case here. Because there were no lots on the other side. Yeah, I might feel differently if there were lots on both sides of YW Vicry Road. But there's not, so there was no need to provide any access to the lake for the other subdivision owners, because they're not there.
So we, we vote to start the process tonight. The actual abandonment would not take place until after the advertisement had, has been done, just so everybody knows, that's, that's the process.
And if, like you said, if somebody comes forward or something during this process, then we can relook at it or whatever the case is.
You can, and I don't want, I don't want to pace to say that it's not like a, yeah, it's not like a, uh, one person can blackball it, process, okay? Uh, in fact, we've had, we, the, there was a, uh, previous commissioner from District Four who sought to abandon a particular road. And, uh, because it was found to be of no further public use and benefit, and folks took petition out to Walmart and they came back with about three hundred signatures saying leave it open, about half of them were from South Carolina. The long and short is that they still found it served no public benefit, so it, it wasn't ended. But it does give you the opportunity, I mean, it gives people an opportunity to come and say if they've ever used it or if they still use it and, 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 you know, make their, their case, should they wish.
I'll say in our cease motion.
It, it also landlocked the person on there too, so it tied up access to their property. We, we talked about that in the past.
Having a motion by Commissioner Oglesby and a second by Commissioner Sayer, that, uh, we begin the abandonment process of YW Vicry, this little stub at the end. Uh, any more discussion?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of questions my own. Number one, you mentioned Willow Lane. I know that road in the past used to tie into Willow Lane. And, and the last time I was down at Willow Lane, they had a gate across it. But is there some kind of camp or park down there?
There's a church camp at the end of Willow Lane.
So this won't interfere with their access to get to their camp?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay, that's, that was my main concern right there.
That gate is actually owned, Willow.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, is it?
Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners, sir.
Next item on the agenda is item thirteen B, county's social media policy. Think it's probably time that we, uh, we got a lot of new people, we need to revisit this, and, uh, I think the recommendation's gonna be for county administrator, everybody retrained to it.
Correct. Uh, what you've got in your packet is, is the existing countywide policy for internet use and email. Does not cover social media. Also attached to that is the public safety side that's been in effect since twenty-ten on the other end of the building down there for the nine-one-one EMS and EMA. This came about because of law changes. Uh, HIPAA laws and other things, we, this particular one we're looking at here that I, uh, I put in effect back there was, was provided by ACCG bloggers years ago. Now that's, you got from nothing to extreme. Now, if for a regular county employee, do they need restrictions that we've got in the public safety field? We probably need something somewhere. The, the, I just, we here at night for directions on how you want us to go, how you want me to go with it. We can adopt what they got down there, if you want that, or we can try to come up with some parts of that that's not quite as stringent in countywide policy. In other words, somebody from the road department per se is not gonna be taking pictures of people in accidents. So, so those restrictions may be a little too tight for them. But it, I'm here for y'all's direction, which way you want me to go with it.
I think you know the problem, yeah, I think you need to come up with a solution to it and bring it back to us.
Uh, or again, you, you got the option of adopting what I've got here for public safety for, I just, I think it may be a little too strict.
I think it is.
Would it, would it take you everything we have a problem with?
Yes. Uh, what, what the problem you're talking about is. Yeah, taking pictures, correct.
And?
Yes, uh.
Other?
Uh, yeah, it's other thing. Most everything's covered in the one that covers public safety.
You pulled along that, you said ACCG?
Correct. The, with, with the HIPAA laws and the Affordable Care Act that changed a lot of laws that we had to comply with.
Why don't you just go back and tailor it to each group? And then bring it back to us.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be departmental specific, what would be, be.
There is overlapping responsibilities and, uh.
Again, like I said, road department would be different than the fire department per se. The fire department had a lot of public safety stuff because they around, uh, patients and stuff like that.
Exactly.
So I, I'll get that, try that ready for the next meeting.
Can I get a motion to have the county administrator bring this back to us with departmental specific, uh, applications to the social media policy?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment?
I got, I got, I got a question.
Alright.
Anything that they do on here as a county would come a matter of open record request, right?
Open, it is an open record, it's subject to open records disclosure.
That's, that's my question. But after reading this thing, I don't see that mentioned.
It's covered in the train, it's an open meeting.
That's under, that's under standard county policy.
Yeah, it complies with open meetings, it was in.
Well, I know this complies with it, but people need to understand that, that anything they put in here can become a matter of disclose.
Correct, and that, and that, at some point, that gets to be a Walter question. Uh, if you use your private phone to conduct county business with it, it's subject to open.
It is subject to open records.
Now, is taking a picture that happened on county time, is that viewed for county business? That's a legal question that Walter, Walter's no answer to, I don't.
Alright, anything else? Have a motion in a second.
So this has nothing to do with Facebook or nothing like that?
Yes, this is what it's about, yeah, social media.
I thought you said it did.
The county policy, for, countywide policy does not, does not, the, the public safety side covers everything.
Right.
And what he's gonna do, the motion is for him to take it departmental specific and bring it back to us for the next meeting for us to adopt.
And I think I asked this question one time before we was having this discussion, but does each department have a specified person that's allowed to put things on social media? That way you know who to go to if something gets on there.
Well, yeah, under, on the public safety policy, it does. It has to be approved by me or somebody I appoint to prove it. Uh, before it's going there in the name of, for it to hurt county EMS or, or whatever.
Fire department.
Fire department, stuff like that.
Okay, that was my, that was my two concerns right there.
Correct, now as far as road department, I don't know if I've got, whether I need to appoint somebody out there, they don't have Facebook pay. It's, it's more governed their personal, their personal actions on, on the negative, uh, negative spend on, on county.
Alright, that's it. We have a motion in a second. Uh, any more discussion? Public comment? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is, uh, item thirteen C, no-through truck ordinance revision. Uh, the purpose of this tonight is to discuss revising our ordinance to remove East Main Street, which is a city street inside the city limits of Bowersville, Georgia. This was put on back when this ordinance was developed. Uh, there was some discussion at that time with, uh, the then mayor. The concern was when they got down to the city lot, city limits on Bethany-Bowersville Road, there was nowhere for them to turn around, and they were already in violation when, when it was marked, therefore that's why the sign was put up there, that's why this was put on the, uh, the ordinance. Can I get a motion that we, uh, have our first reading to remove East Main Street from the Hart County no-through truck ordinance?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Mr. Oglesby, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Sayer, any more discussion? Public comment? No, yes, ma'am? Yeah, yeah, alright, yeah. And my first question is gonna be, are you, you ladies are members of the Bowersville City Council, are you speaking on behalf of the council? Have you been authorized to speak on behalf of the council? Or are you speaking as individuals?
We're speaking as individuals.
Okay, just as a point of clarity.
It has not been voted by the council.
So you're speaking as individuals?
Yep. First of all, I'm Cindy Hensley from the Bowersville City Council. And, um, as you know, um, there has been a lot of vicarings between the city, the county, and, um, citizens about this road recently. And really, the reason we came tonight was simply to clear the air and provide you with the facts, um, from the road study that was completed by Wilbur. Um, we'd also like the community to know that, I guess, as citizens, um, we're really concerned with safety.
Okay, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
This is a city street, right?
It is.
So it shouldn't be on a county ordinance? That's why, I mean, it, the city side of this is irrelevant as far as the Board of Commissioners is concerned. So I, there's been no problem, I know, uh, with the Board of Commissioners and city of Bowersville on this. Because this is the first time we as a board have discussed this. So I just want to make that clear, there's no animosity, there's no animosity there. There's, there's a, a citizen or a couple of citizens who wanted the sheriff to enforce this and, um, you know, in the sheriff's fence, the sheriff doesn't enforce city ordinances, he enforces county ordinances. This is a point of housekeeping for us to clean this up so that there's no confusion going forward. Uh, this board i- is not getting involved in the enforcement side of that because we're not, that's not part of our, our, our charge. So that's the whole purpose of doing this. If we're gonna talk about the abandonment part, that's what we need to focus our comments on. On this side, on this issue, unless you want to address this under public comment. But we're talking about taking this off specifically, is what we're talking about.
Okay.
So.
Can we continue in the public comment section?
Yeah, I have a problem with that. Unless anybody has a problem with saying, I mean, I think you guys know this is what.
I've got a question.
Uh-huh.
But she said that there was a problem arising between county.
And that's why I said there's been no problem with, with us.
So, I want to ask, have there been a problem between us and you all?
Not officially, no, no. And like I said, we were just wanting to clear the air, and we will do that during the public comment section. I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think what they're trying to say, in, in my opinion, is they've done a lot of hoopla about this road, and I think they want to clear it and show us the facts of why everything is going like it is. And, and it's getting into, I don't wanna say it, but contest, and I think a lot of people think they, they going against the chicken farmers and the trucking, but that's not the case. They've got an act where they're legitimate concerned, but I think it'd be able to share it with the public.
But what, what, my point here is, what does it have to do with our ordinance? It doesn't have anything to do with it, I understand. That's why I said what I said, that's, and that's why we asked for public comment on this specific part.
But it does pertain to East Main, mostly.
Okay, and I'm happy to do that, but I think that's what it should be. It's not now, but we get to the public comment, which will be in just a minute.
Okay, addressing this being taken off, is there a reason that this is being taken off now, specifically? When it hasn't been an issue in the past to be taken off?
It should have never.
Is that legitimate?
It should have really never been put on our ordinance list because it is a city street.
Okay, are any of the other streets on the ordinance in that same?
Not that I know of.
I, I don't know.
Not that I know of. As, as a point of, as a point of transparency, uh, this was gonna be on the last meeting agenda, and the gentleman who wrote the letter to the editor of blasting the Board of Commissioners about not enforcing the ordinance, I took it off the agenda because I didn't want it to look like it was retaliatory, because it was right after the newspaper come on, come out. And, you know, there's been some issues there, we're just trying to clean this up. It doesn't involve Board Commissioners, that is a city street, you guys have jurisdiction over that. Uh, and it's, that's our, extended of our involvement.
Y'all do have signs up there, right?
We do, and.
So that, that'll.
Can I?
That, that'll still suffice.
We'll talk about that in just a minute, let's move forward with this and come back. I have a motion by Commissioner Oglesby and a second by Commissioner Sayer to take this as a first reading, uh, removing East Main Street from the Hart County no-through truck ordinance. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item thirteen D. Open records, open meetings training, this is something we do annually. Uh, I'd like to, I'll be happy to do it again for all, uh, new people. It's open to the public, anybody that wants to come. If you're not familiar with it, it's, uh, pretty interesting information. I'd like to do this, uh, we'll schedule it after the, uh, either the first or second meeting in February. What everybody's thoughts are. Do it the last meeting in February, after it, does that give everybody?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Sayer and a second by Commissioner Teasley. We require, uh, new people appointed to boards and authorities to attend the open records, open meetings training, that way they are aware of their legal responsibilities as they serve in the, in the capacity in which they're serving their community. Uh, and we'll do this after our second meeting in February. Any more discussion? Public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Now we'll move into public comment, if you'd like to address the board, if you'll come forward. forward.
I'm Jim Martin, I've met you before because I've been here before, I have with me Al Braxton, who is the CPA. If you recall, what I've talked to you about on the occasions that I've been before you was the four corners project, we call it, that's exit one seventy-seven by Dads, and this is where we've worked now for three years with the support of former Governor Deal, the Georgia Department of Transportation, and the Department of Corrections, and the Ladies Whitworth Facility, to try to get those four corners to where we can use that as a training ground for those inmates at Whitworth. We have an arbist named John Charas, who I've introduced you to him before, such that we can train those ladies, and therefore then, when they get out of their, when they finish their term, they can get good jobs, uh, having the training of working on those four corners, and we wanna plant, plant, uh, the ground cover, shrubs and plants and so forth, and, believe it or not, it's over sixty thousand plants and shrubs that are gonna be needed to do those four corners and the bank below Dads. Well, we need money, and we haven't been able to secure very much, so we needed a sign, and so Al has gotten, would you give this out to them? So that you can see the sign that we wanna put to try to get more interest in Heart County as well as Lake Hartwell, and so we had to find a place to put that sign. I'm gonna pass around to you a picture of a sign that's on the way, if you're coming into Georgia from South Carolina, before you get to the off-exit, you'll see that sign right there that's fixing to come before you, and it talks about dads. That sign hadn't been used in a long time, and so we found out that that sign is owned by a lady named Jaclyn Moore, in fact, Mr. Warren Moore bought that land many years ago, and, uh, he paid seven thousand dollars, and we were, with Mrs. Moore, she will, is willing, we have a five oh one C three, not-for-profit situation, and Mrs. Moore has agreed to take a letter for that piece of property for seven thousand dollars, which means that we will give her a letter showing that she has, when she files her two thousand eighteen taxes, that she can turn in that letter, therefore then, and get seven thousand dollars tax credit. I wanted to make sure that the land was, uh, that, that it was valued at that price, so I got a, uh, what am I trying to say, an just, uh...
Valuation.
...valuation of it, and that's what they figured the land was worth, that's what Mr. Moore paid for it. You charge taxes on that property, I believe it's fifty-four dollars a year. Well, what we wanna do with that, and I wanted to, we wanna donate that to Heart County, it's a little less than a half acre, and it's on that road, it goes out to the marina, uh, as you saw that picture, you probably remember that sign, it's in pretty bad shape. So I went to Walter Gordon and asked him, what could, could we in fact present you that lot and give it to you, and he said, well, it's gotta have a clear title, and so he did that. Walter, was there anything you needed to say about that?
Well, only that, um, the status that I happen to be in was that it's still in the estate of Warren Moore. And I don't represent that state, it'd need to be something done to convey it to, of his more, whoever the heirs are.
Right. And Mrs. Moore then will be presenting the title to, once you, if you say you'll accept the property, which we'd be glad to give you, I have some things I'd like to ask of that, and, uh, by giving it to you, and I've already talked to Terrell about this, and I told Terrell that if you look at that picture, you'll see where we need to cut away some limbs around that sign, that, 'cause it's been, hadn't been taken care of, and if you look down to the bottom of it, you'll see where it needs to be cleaned up. Now, in order to get money, as you would see there, it says Zaxby's then at the bottom, that's my cousin, and I went over to Zaxby's, we did, and I told him I needed fifty thousand dollars, and I'd like to get that in, preferably in five years, ten thousand dollars a year, for five years, and he agreed, I feel like he agreed, not emphatically, but he wanted to know what, this and that, I feel like we can count on Zach to do this for us, which will give us the money, we believe, to start our project, to get these ladies out there trained with, as I say, John Arbist, uh, John Charas or Arbist. So, uh, we would like, which is not a four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar check like you just got, but our little price of value would be seven thousand dollars, and we'd like to give that to the county, and I'd be glad to, we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So you're requesting seven thousand dollars from the county?
We, we, we wanna give you the title, oh, I would like to say that of, that if you decide you want to sell that property, we would like very much then to, uh, give us the first option to get it, because we can continue, as you see that sign, we're gonna continue to have sponsors such that we can have money for our project of doing those Any questions?
You're not asking for money.
No, we're giving you the property.
The only, the only one we'd be asking for is just to clean the lot up so that the sign is visible when we get ready to redo the famous sign.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was fixing to ask.
Isn't it on DOT right away?
No, it's not on DOT, and I've talked to DOT.
Huh?
It's, it's not on DOT right away.
I, I've had discussions with DOT, as a matter of fact, the, uh, individual, that DOT is in charge of all of their advertising, uh, and this sign is, is still active, and he has agreed to, you know, give us the active title to it, uh, once the property has been transferred.
Right, I think this is something we need to take under advisement and think about before we jump into it.
Well, if it's tied up in the state, you're gonna have to clear that up first, right?
That's true.
Is that right, Walter?
It sounds... It could be as simple as a deed from the estate to Mrs. Moore, or even a deed from the estate to, um, to the, to the parties that are gonna be proceeding.
She has the deed, I've, she has it, and, and once I give her the letter, we'll authorize her to use that letter with her CPA, to give her seven thousand dollars tax, I don't know if it'd be cra, I don't know how that works.
Deduction.
Tax deduction of seven thousand dollars. We don't have the seven thousand, and that's why I went to her and told if she could do that under, we've used that before, the five oh one C three under our community garden, and to move the old house, y'all remember there used to be an old house on that property? We did the same thing, getting that house torn down and carried away, and, uh, it worked, and I've, we've gotten our CPA to make sure that that's all okay under our five oh one C three, so, again, I hope you look at this as a gift to you, and, uh, something that will help our county, it's you we're promoting, and I don't see any negatives towards it. But I'll be, any questions you've got? But if you wanna take, and, we would like to do this, the reason we wanna get this and moved along is that date of that letter, excuse me, will be December nineteenth, so that she can use, I mean, I'm sorry, December, well, December nineteenth of the year of eighteen, she can use that to turn over to, help her with her two thousand eighteen taxes. That's our reason for trying to get, so we wanna get that to her soon again, so she can begin filing her two thousand eighteen taxes. Any more questions, Mr. Chairman?
I'm good, I mean, I just think it deserves further study, um...
Well, then again, if we could get that as soon as we could, we would appreciate it, so that I can meet with Mrs., uh, meet Mrs. Moore and get the title to give to you.
Everybody okay with taking under advisement? Then we'll go from there, 'cause there's some questions I got, uh, some, the questions I'd rather talk with Mr. Gordon offline, though.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Last public comment, Ms. Hensley, Ms. Cagle.
Um, as I was saying, um, as a citizen of Bowersville, um, I am really concerned about the safety issue. Uh, we have this very narrow road, um, who a lot of people travel on, um, and I'm really concerned about, uh, not only the, you know, the trucks that are coming through, but they're meeting cars and meeting other trucks, and that is a real concern to me for all the other, for all the vehicles traveling that road and the people who live on that road as well. Um, also, of course, maintaining the road is another issue, we know that that is our problem as a town, but you guys know, as well as I do, how expensive it is to maintain roads, and when you have a very small town with a very small budget, that can be an issue. So tonight, with, this is just, uh, information that we wanted to give to the county, uh, we are not asking for anything except to give the information to you.
Uh, you have a statement? Kelly Cagle, uh, Town of Bowersville Council, um, I don't know if you got your, the traffic study in your, um, packet, but the truck traffic, uh, we did a study with Wilburn, and the truck traffic on this study, um, I don't know if you have it available, if you don't have it. Okay, well, they did a study each way, so going from the fifty-one, um, going from in-town, fifty-one down East Main Street out to the fire station, those trucks, um, well, actually, it's commercial trucks, so it's all commercial trucks, and, well, let me start over, the, it's vehicles per day, and those, those vehicles down, just going in that direction is two thousand two hundred twenty-six per week, and if you do the math on that, that is twenty-five trucks per day, and if you tally all those squares up in each direction on East Main Street, it totals fifteen thousand eight hundred and twelve trucks a year. Those roads are not equipped to carry that amount of tr, of commercial truck traffic, and I do have pictures, if I can approach the...
Yes, sir.
Um, of these roads that are, and they're driving off the road when I need another vehicle to pass by, I only have one of that.
Real fast, man.
Uh, but they're driving off the road, I need another vehicle coming in, so therefore it's pushing the truck off, and our edges of the road are crumbling, and it's the same hazard for the people that are coming, oncoming to that be, to that commercial truck. So it's, it's, especially at the stop sign at East Main Street and fifty-one, when they're turning in, they're going off the road when they turn in and making ditches, and it's causing frequent for us to have to pay the, you know, to fill that dirt and the gravel in on a frequent basis.
When's the last time Bowersville, did any road work on those roads?
Um...
'Cause that's...
Probably they wouldn't have.
On East Main?
Yeah, with L-M.
On East Main Street?
Well, we pa, I think we did some...
It looks like you did anything on East Main Street.
Gravel? Gravel? Or did we do it on, uh, Jen?
No, since we're the council.
Everybody saying all of it?
No, I'm saying...
I mean, the county, uh, we have the same issue, we've got narrow roads, we've got roads that are not sixteen feet wide that trucks go through, uh, because people have farms and businesses and they have to be serviced, um, you know, agriculture's our number one industry in this county, and you got, you mentioned...
I said commercial trucks, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I said commercially, so I'm saying all trucks that are the, you know, that are too wide to go down that road, I'm not just picking on chicken trucks, I'm not just...
I'm saying all trucks.
It's cement, it's cement trucks, the weight of it, and the width of the vehicles, of the, of the trucks.
And we, as a county, are facing the same issues. Uh, that was the purpose of our no-through truck ordinance, is to limit the trucks as far as keep them off of roads so that they didn't cut through at Bowersville to get to Gold Mine or to get to Nancy Hart, whatever the case may be, because we know, all know they're coming off the interstate, or they're coming off of seventeen.
Thank you.
That's, and our ordinance plainly allows, uh, any business in the county to, uh, you know, if they, if there's a business inside the county, they can run any county road with any commercial truck, they pay taxes, they have a right to those.
On the city streets of town, of the town?
You get tax money from these folks, you get L-M money, that's where it comes from.
Yeah.
City of Bowersville gets money from these trucks, yes you do.
Um...
Your pay the money comes from sales tax and, and, uh, as well as the ad valorem taxes, each, each of these heavy trucks, they have to pay an additional tag, so you're getting part of that.
The, the most important thing while we're here is the safety of it, the safety of our citizens. We're, we're about to do, um, have a park in place in, in a couple of years, or a year and a half, and these citizens can't even walk to it safely, that's, that's, that's a big thing.
Yeah, I've sat and I've watched trucks and vehicles meet on East Main Street, I've seen it where they meet, uh, we have these narrow roads, uh, it's not something that, uh, you know, I understand it's a safety issue, but everything is a safety issue when you get behind the wheel of a vehicle, uh, you know, if we're gonna have people walking, then that's where sidewalks and things like that come into play, uh, roads are made for vehicle or traffic.
Uh, one other thing I just wanna say is that we're trying to put some dates together to meet with the commercial industry, to see if we can come together for a resolution, we would like to invite y'all, you, uh, all of y'all, if you'd like to come, um, it's not mandatory, it's just if you would like to come, that would be a good presence, and maybe we can...
Y'all have a notice with trucks with that?
Yeah, we already have a truck ordinance, yeah, we did that.
They have a no-through truck ordinance, they have a no-through truck ordinance.
Yeah, we put that together last, or the year before last, we did the trucks, the truck study, and then, I mean, the, uh, traffic study, and then we put the new, uh, ordinance in place and put the signs up, and they're ignoring the signs.
They're, they're not, are these trucks cutting through, are they going directly to farms or wherever they're going?
On that road?
Yeah.
They're cutting through, 'cause they're going down...
Where are they cutting through, where are they going to?
They're going to Bethany, I think, Bowers, there's a road on down, I'm not too familiar with the road.
Where's, where are the trucks going if they're cutting through?
They're going out to the county.
Going to Beethen Red One Church Road, one?
I think it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's that road.
The one I know about was on Red One Church Road, and that was the most direct route that's coming the way that those trucks went, they didn't cut through one, County Road to get to another state route, they were taking the most direct route to that farm, is the one I'm aware of.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm, I'm speaking of all commercial trucks, so we would like for you to go, and the two dates that we're talking about is March second and March ninth, it's a Saturday, and we're, believe that we're gonna try to get together in the morning around ten and thirty, so, we would like for y'all to come if you'd like, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment?
I, I understand what I wanna say about you.
All right, go ahead.
All right, when all the hoopla started on this, I decided I'd just take a ride up there one day, look at the road, see the issue, nobody knew I was there, I wanted to go by myself, I didn't wanna have no preconceived notion in my brain, and I took some pictures while I was, and I was sharing with y'all, but I went down through, I started down at sixty-one, fifty-one, Bethany-Bowersville Road, and I measured up all the way up to where West Main comes into, uh, East Main, uh, and it measures twenty foot plus on Bethany-Bowersville Road, all the way till you get right there where West Main comes up, and it's about twenty-one and a half foot to the line of the pavement, I'm assuming it's wider because it's tied into another street, but then, one address down below there, that road narrows from twenty-one foot, or twenty foot plus, twenty-one foot plus, to seventeen foot six, and while I was, it was raining while I was doing this, so I was getting pretty wet, and I was in a hurry, but while I was standing there, I seen a truck come up on Bethany-Bowersville Road, and it was moving along pretty fast, I'm not gonna say it's speeding, 'cause I can't, I ain't got a brain, rest of that fast, what people traveling, but it was moving on... But it was moving on pretty good, and it got completely over into the left handle while I stand there watching. And I took some pictures by myself, and I'm going to share, share some of these pictures with you. That right there is pretty close to where West Main comes in. You can see the tierage on the road, you can also see that there's no shoulder on that road whatsoever. All right, if you take a look at the next picture here, this guy where you can see people have been running off of the road and scarring the asphalt. People had to be running off the road to be able to scuff asphalt and break it up. Now, I ain't got a dog in this fight, but I, I like to get the facts straight. Did they look at it down there?
We got this all over the county.
I understand it. You know, a lot of people acting like they don't have a right to have a concern, I want to put a look to see if they did have a true concern. All right, you've got this right here, and that's degrading the road. But this is the one that was kind of shocking when I took this picture. And I laid my tape measure down there to watch and show you. Those roads are seventeen foot six. You can plainly see right here where that truck or car or whatever it was, off the road, nearly nineteen inches, or right at nineteen inches. That right there, if they had to get off the road nineteen inches, that ain't road ain't wide enough or safe enough to just pass at one time. I mean, that's, that's my opinion. Now, I want to clear up something else that I've heard a lot of people talk about during this, is what our county ordinance says. And I thought it said the same thing everybody else been saying, and I really read it. And it says it shall be unlawful for any truck to travel those certain kind of roads set forth on a tax exhibit A as now or hereafter intended unless the vehicle trip originates or ends on such road, or is made for the purpose of making a delivery to a site on such road. So I know through truck, that means you've got to be making a delivery on that road. It don't mean you to use that road as a cut through.
Read, read the first part, what did you say before the "or"? Read the first part before the conjunction sentence, read that again. Originates or ends?
Yeah, on that road.
Right, so they have every right to go make a delivery or pickup on that road?
That's what I'm saying, on that road. But you can't really use that road to go through. According to our, you know, the oldest...
That's right. You can't cut through, you, you take the, the delivery to it.
And our Pope law actually says that we had to have a site plan study, and they have to go stay on state highway to the nearest county road to get to the farm or wherever they go.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, our poultry ordinance grandfather's all previously existing poultry farms.
Yeah, I may have to do it, but I'm just, I'm just making a point.
I understand.
I, I, well, you know, I'm trying to say that these people have a valid legitimate concern. That's all I'm trying to say. And it made a lot of hoopla about it, and I'm not saying that, that we need the hoopla, but they do have a legitimate valid concern on the safety of their streets up there.
And they levy village, they, they levy taxes, they set a millage rate, they get tax money, and, yeah, it's not our place to manage their roads.
That, that is a residential street, pretty heavily populated. I looked up the county road that has no right of way, the county sheets, we have that road has no right of way whatsoever, I guess it's just blacktop, the ag's blacktop, the hedge's blacktop. It don't list a right of way on that particular road, there are several in the city of Bowers. I just, well, people understand, they got a legitimate concern.
Yes, right quick.
That road is substandard, so it's, it's not...
I think the study...
It's not a traffic access.
Substandard, what now?
It's substandard.
Well, we got, we got a lot of roads in the county that are not up to current specifications.
Well, we're not talking about other, we're talking about, about the East Main Street right now.
Is it a city street or is it a county road? It's a city street. So, I'm just saying, you have the same, we have the same issue that you're, that you have. That's my point. I mean, it's, we're no different. We're, we're trying to, we restricted truck traffic as far as no-through trucks on ours to protect our assets. We're not trying to prevent trucks like the city of Bowersville seems to want to do.
If these are city streets, if it's not our responsibility to, to put them up to standard, it's y'all's responsibility to get them up to standard for the vehicles to travel safely.
Well, cars can travel safely on these roads.
And, and Bowersville...
Car drivers are not.
But you're saying the roads are not safe, now you're saying Hart County's a safe on the road, but sure it's not?
No, I'm just saying that we're talking about Bowersville right now, we're not talking about other county roads, you can put that in there. And it's just about, we're talking about Bowersville, and I just want to put the safety part of it out there. It is very dangerous for these, the people or a truck to meet together. It's pushing the car off the red, or pushing any truck off the road.
And we've got that everywhere, Kelly. We have that in every, we got it on even our twenty-foot wide roads, where trucks make these, go in these curves. They, it is what it is, I'll be happy to show you, I can take you all over the county and show you examples of that. I mean, it, it is what it is. And I'm not trying to be difficult or anything, but, I mean, we've got it everywhere. This whole board got out and rode roads, what, two months ago? And, and we see it everywhere, even our main roads. I mean, when we, Bethany Bowersville Road, when we widened it, John purposely added extra asphalt in the curves because these tandem trucks, whenever they turn, they run off the road. You, you guys know what I'm talking about. And, you know, we, we try to keep them maintained as best we can. We don't have the resources to go and, and upgrade all our roads, just like the city of Bowersville, I feel sure you don't. We have to use what we got, and that's, that's what we do. And that's what we're doing, so.
Hart County also has a ordinance that states no trucks allowed in residential areas even unless they make a delivery in that area.
Or pickup.
Or pickup.
And you got to go through these things, I mean, you can't...
But there's not a, there's not a delivery, I mean, a truck or a chicken or, you know, delivery in the city down East Main Street. There's not even a chicken.
No, but they have, they're, they're taking the shortest direct route, that's what they're doing. If you send them to Royston, the, the longer trucks are on the road, the more, the farther you have to go, the more dangerous it is. Now, if you, if you're going to send, make them go to Royston and then come through backroads on, they're going to have to, they'll have to violate our ordinance, because they're...
So you rather their, those trucks be pushed past as much as possible?
I'm not saying, I'm, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that in, in order to get to some of these places, they're going to have to cut through.
The problem that's been happening for about thirty years, thirty, forty years, is that all the trucks have been pushed off from the county on Bowersville.
Not true, that is not a true statement. It's not a true statement. We didn't put this county ordinance in place until about eight years ago, so...
Eight years ago was when?
When this ordinance was adopted.
Twenty-ten. Twenty-ten is when the no-through truck order went into effect.
So, I mean...
I think the point we're trying to make is that they have a valid concern.
It's their, it's their street.
And that's their road, and they should be able to do what they want to with it without creating a bunch of hoopla.
I agree.
Can I throw a caveat in here? The only thing about that is, you, to get to our Bethany Bowersville Road, they got to go through that road to get there.
Say that again.
To get to our, to get to Bethany Bowersville Road, they have to go through that road.
No, they don't. There's several on the road they can go through.
Which ones? That, that can legitimately, commonly, without going all around the world to get back? They're feeding farms down there.
They can go down fifty-one, they can turn right there to Airline School, or they can turn up at White Wood and come up Old Cannon Church Road.
Well, that road is certainly not made for trucks.
Well, I understand that, but here's the fact, if something happened up there and they had a major incident on that road and they had to close that road off, them truckers would find another way to go, pew. They wouldn't have no choice. So if they can find it there, they can find it.
There was an accident, this past week.
But I'm not sitting here trying to say yeah or no, I'm just trying to get the point out, they have a valid concern.
That, that road, like it did in the city of Bowers, that road continues on and turns into a county road at the end of the city.
Bowersville is poised for economic growth, but when you don't want trucks, trucks bring manufacturing, Bowersville will always be what Bowersville is.
That's not what I'm saying, I would say they're just fine when they have a delivery without cash. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that...
All right, we're, we're going into executive session. Can I get a motion, we're going into executive session, personnel?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Carter as our second.
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Sayer. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let us know when it will be, the second of the night. Thank you.